Call the meeting to order, all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, all members are present. Prove the agenda. We have one addition on 7J. Approve agreement for Internet extension into the campground. And I want to add, under reports and presentations, planning and zoning update on a few items. Is there any other changes to the agenda? Counsel? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda with those two additions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Sheldon, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Joe. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Approval of the minutes of the September 20th regular meeting. Is there in your packet, is there any changes, corrections, or clarification needed? Hearing nothing, do I have a motion to approve the September 20 regular meeting minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
All abstentions, aye.
Four in favor, none against, one abstention. This now brings us to our public open forum. This is besides the three public hearings that we have, so is there anyone that wants to speak to the council? Is there anyone that would like to speak to the council? Are you here for the public hearing? Or the public open forum? They're different. Okay, public hearing, that'll be coming later. Call a third time, is there anyone that wants to speak to the council? Our public open forum is now closed. We will now recess the regular council meeting and enter into our public hearings. We have three public hearings before us this evening in accordance with the official mailed and public notice in the matter of the final assessments for author's edition, the final assessments for 2023 reclamation project, and the assessments of unpaid utility and service bills. It is our intention that everyone has the opportunity to be heard. If you wish to speak, please sign in on the signup sheet at the back of the room. Procedure is as follows. Presentation by staff followed by questions of staff. Then we will take public input, raise your hand. When recognized by the mayor, approach the podium and state your name and address for the record. State your comments and position. No one will be allowed to speak a second time until everyone has had a chance to be heard. First, we will hear questions for clarification. Second, public in favor of the proposal. Third, public speaking against the proposal. After everyone who wishes to speak has had the opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed. After closure of the public hearing, the council will deliberate and take action as appropriate. Members of the audience do not participate in the council's discussion unless the majority of the council concedes to hear additional information or questions. The hearing is now in session. Keith?
All right.
Author's edition?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, tonight, we'll first go through a brief presentation that will remind the council and the audience of what the project actually was, and then we'll get into the actual final costs and the assessments for the project. As a reminder on this, this is, most of the costs are going to the area that's being developed in this north area here, but there are a couple assessments for adjacent property owners in here. And those are the ones that we're really focusing on tonight. The rest, the city is assessing and putting costs on the individual lots in that development. So it'll primarily be focusing on the existing city lots. Okay, oops, what's going on here? It's not supposed to come up. Okay, reminder of the project, this is overall plat for the author's edition here. North is to our right-hand side, we have some existing homes, these are the ones that were impacted as it relates to the cost that were adjacent to it here. We did the first phase of improvement, which is this right in here, so 19 new homes, streets that come back and tie into Hendricks and Hickman Drive through here. We did do a change order, as the council recalls, as it relates to this intersection, and redid it, so it's no longer sort of that sweeping right-hand turn, and now it's more of a cross-intersection through there. We put in new utilities, eight-inch tenon sanitary sewer in the project, eight-inch water main, new services for all the existing homes, as well as a couple of lots that have potential for development of the existing homes that were adjacent to the parcel. Storm sewer collection and treatment ponding was placed with the project. And street improvements as well, we have a 36-foot back-to-back, excuse me, face-to-face street, and we do have sidewalk on one side. We also do have a short segment of trail that goes up and will eventually go along Ferry Lake Road up to the north. The street section was eight-inch aggregate base, two-inch base cores, and inch-and-a-half bituminous wear cores. The first two are what was already installed this year, the inch-and-a-half bituminous wear cores will be installed in June of 2024 to finish out the project. Couple things with this, we did some temporary cul-de-sacs that were related right at the north ends of Hendricks here, as well as the north end of what is now called, this is now called Half a Day Drive. So there is a cul-de-sac here, we do have a large stormwater pond down through here, and that's what has treatment before it discharges into the wetland area over here. We do have a potential future discharge for that ponding area that will be installed at some point in time in the future with additional phases of author's edition. These are the estimated final project costs, the construction cost came in at just a little over 1.3, 1.368 million dollars. These are the breakdown of some of the development costs, design costs, construction, administration costs, assessments, record drawings, all those kinds of things. We need to anticipate what all those costs are now as it relates to the final project. Nearly everything is done, everything through this line item right here is complete. This is nearly done at this point in time, so we've estimated what those costs would be, as well as these final numbers. We do still have a small amount of contingencies that are in the project, just to cover things that could be left. Leaves us with a final estimated project cost, 1.723 million dollars. Assessment rolls, these are what the rates are as it relates to per lineal foot. For the street with the curb, the sanitary sewer, just under $67. Water main, just under, just over $73 per lineal foot. Our services, 190172, water service, excuse me, sanitary sewers, water service, 255032, and a storm sewer on a per-square-foot basis of about 36 sets a square foot. That leaves us, once again, with our total project cost. These are the assessable costs, and these are only related to the existing lots that are adjacent. The remaining here is that which costs will go, most of that will go towards the 19 lots, plus some of it will be put on future costs as it relates to author's additions to the north for future phases of it. And those have been discussed already previously about what those lots will be selling for, working through the EDA. So I'm not including that and discussing that in any detail with this presentation. The assessment breakdown, everyone should have, those in the audience should have received these already, what those breakdowns are. We do have some current assessments, we do have deferrals on the number of assessments through here, and they are the same numbers with the exception of, we need to get that which has been sent out, which is the Colstrom parcel here. And there was some discrepancies in what the number should have been, I believe what was sent out was around $2,200, and actually is about $1,100 is what it should be. So this, which is updated on here, I think it's 110883, would be the correct assessment for that particular parcel. So that's the only change of anything that's been sent out to the property owners. Once again, it shows those that are current and those that are deferred, and then there's a total assessment associated with each of them. Once again, the total for all of those is about that $60,000 for the total assessments for those. With that, I think I will turn it back to the mayor to ask any council's questions of the council, and then I can address any questions from the audience.
Okay. Counsel, have any questions?
I have one question regarding the future possibility of a output from that stormwater. Has that been calculated into these assessments or into this total project cost yet?
It has been, and as it relates to, not on these, because that's kind of part of the overall author's edition as a whole. So it doesn't impact this yet, but we do have those costs estimate for what we've done for the entire author's edition, and it would be related to those lots, okay? So we don't, and we haven't had those costs yet, we've got those factored in for the future.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. For the author's edition, we will open it up to the public. Is there anyone that wants to speak in favor or against, or needs clarification? Just state your name and address, please.
Mary Becker's, 305 Hendrick Street. I am wondering why we have to pay for that land to the north of us, why we are paying for the water and sewer hookup when we didn't want the water or sewer there. The only reason you had to go through that property was so they would have enough, so you could get water to the other houses.
Okay, so that's the lot that you owned to the north?
Yes.
That one there, the service stubs go into every possible lot that could obviously be sold that way. We don't have to open up the street after the fact, you know?
Dennis and I had a meeting with Vicki, and we said we didn't want that water hooked up, and they put it in.
We had talked about deferring, so it will never be, have to be paid unless you hook up.
Okay.
So it's there, but unless you hook up, you won't have to pay that, that's the term part.
Okay.
Okay, so it is deferred until they hook up, okay.
Okay. And then I'm wondering why we're getting charged interest if we don't pay it right away, we're getting charged interest on that?
Debts?
What's the 4.5%?
That's if you, the assessed part, if you let go on your taxes and pay it over the years, then there's interest. If you pay it prior to November 15th, then there's no interest.
But if it goes on our taxes, then there's?
Then they charge interest, yes.
Why should we be paying interest on that? We didn't borrow the money from you.
Debts, you know, it's always what's 1% over prime? Or what we borrow our money for?
That's more than the bank charges. Okay, and then I heard that the seeding is not getting done in that property next to us, on our property, this fall yet?
No, that is, we've done, so the seeding will be completed soon on that.
Soon, you don't know when?
We don't know the exact dates, and you're coming in, actually, you do the trail tomorrow, we're scheduled to do that, and then the seeding will be shortly thereafter.
Okay, because that's what we heard, so. I think that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else that would like to speak? Or has, in favor or against, or needs clarification? That's fine, state your name and address.
No romantic, 308 Hendrick Street. I was just wondering, will the current Hendrick Street, or the old Hendrick Street, why isn't that being paid this year as part of the project? Because it's really, really, you know, rough.
The existing?
Yes, exactly.
So, that actually part was looked at as part of the street reconstruction project, so a different project than author's. And just due to funding, we ended up having to cut several different areas off of that project. So it's on the radar to be done, it just couldn't be done with the funding that the city had available for this particular year, but we will be looking at that as we do kind of every year. So I can't tell at this point, the council will have to make decisions as to when that will be done, but I would suspect it would be, you know, sometime in the near-ish future when that will come back on the list again for things to do.
I also, because the road has been rocky for so long, I'm tired of it.
Yeah. Okay, well, the council's listening to you.
The point is that work can be done, the rest of it got done. And I was wondering about the seeding too, because we just have a narrow strip that has to be done, and we'd like to get it done this fall yet, so.
The seeding is scheduled to get done this fall, and this is actually a very good time to be doing it. We don't, yeah, we can't really do it during the heat during the summer, and we had a pretty hot summer, as you know. So it's scheduled to get done here very soon. We had to wait for, there was private utilities that went in the addition and whatnot, so all that's done, and we're just getting to the point where we're sort of buttoning everything up. And the only thing really left, you know, after next year will be the final wear cores on the new streets over there. So that'll really be the only thing left for next year.
Well, sooner the better, we'll be happy. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else that would like to approach the council and speak in favor or against, or needs clarification? Is there anyone else that wants to speak? Okay, we'll move on to the next public hearing. Same rules of order, the 2023 reclamation project.
Hey, this one is a much simpler project. This was the reclamation of Lakeview Drive. So this was that add-on where we just went through and did some minor curb repairs, and then did the, took off the pavement and put it right back down again for the Lakeview Drive properties. The total project cost ended up being 134, 577, 81, and that was somewhat less than the original assessment that was sent out, estimated was 154. The additional, there was one piece on there, there was 35% of the project was assessed. There was one property that asked for some additional work to be done that they would pay for themselves. So we have the one parcel added 2882 to the project, except they're paying 100% of that cost. The assessment carries for five years at 4.5%, unless they choose to pay it upfront, and they do have the option for deferment of the assessment in instances of disability or hardship, or they can pay their assessments directly to the city by November 15th to avoid any and all interest charges. I did provide you the assessment roll with the names, addresses, and the final amount of each assessment. So the total assessed to the properties for this project is 49,982.23. The balance of that is paid for, of course, through the general fund street department. You have any questions on that project?
Questions from the council? Okay. Is there anyone in the public that wants to speak on the reclamation project? In favor or against, or needs clarification? Is there anyone here that wants to speak? Call a third time, is there anyone that would like to speak on the reclamation project? Hearing nothing, we will move on to the 2023 unpaid utility and city services.
So the city council on August 16th called for a hearing to be held tonight to consider the assessment of unpaid utility and service bills. State statute does allow us to assess those to property owners. Listing was provided and was attached, a total of 2,008, 1356. One was for sidewalk, it's 32234, one was for lotmowing of 33542, one was for junk disposal of 16382, and the balance was the water utility bill from the Saxon Republic Utility of 199198, for a total of 2,008, 1356. And these are payable with 2024 property taxes. We do not carry those over a number of years.
Okay. Counsel, have any questions on those four? If not, is there anyone in the public that would like to speak in favor or against, or has, needs clarification? Is there anyone in the council that would like to speak in favor or against, or needs clarification? Call a third time?
I do have one that I got by phone.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so I do have the one on 725 St. Clair Lewis Avenue, he had a utility bill from the Saxon Republic Utility. This was for a water bill, and it was a result of a water break in his home after the meter. And so I understand it went on for several months while they were attempting to get him to make the repair, which finally occurred, and he did get the repair, but he has not paid that invoice to the public utility, and so they're requesting that it be put on the property taxes. He has requested that the city waive that fee, because he feels like, because it was a leak, that he didn't have use of that water. And so it comes to the city council to make that final determination on whether or not to assess that to the property taxes on behalf of the public utility.
Okay. Questions from the council on that?
He was made aware of the leak.
Yes.
And it was after the meter, so in my opinion, he would have had the use of that water if he would have fixed the leak.
Exactly.
So either way, he should pay for it.
I agree.
So. Anyone else that wants to speak? Last call on that one. Okay, that brings us to the end of our public hearings, and we will re- convene our regular council meeting. Reports and presentations. Keith?
All right, back up, I think I've said most of all the things already. The 2022 project, the Second Street project, I think if you've gone through there, you'll notice the boulevards are looking much better than they were in the past, so that seemed to be fairly successful, it looked pretty green and grass, so I think that was working well. That project basically is done, and we're just in the final closeout process for that project. So that's where that one is at. As kind of mentioned earlier, on the author's edition, what's really left out there is there's going to be paving on that trail segment tomorrow, and then after that will be seeding of those areas, final shaping and seeding of the boulevard areas that need to be seeded yet, and then that'll be pretty much done, other than the wear cores, next June. So that's pretty much where that one's at, so pretty much finished with things at this point.
Okay. Questions from the council? Does the lift station out in the South Industrial Park, is that working properly?
Yep, everything's done and finished, and that project is entirely done, we just need to do a final closeout. You'll see, you know, a final pay request here in the fairly near future here.
Okay, the reason why I ask is I see one of our utility trucks out there almost every day, so I wasn't sure that they were.
They usually do go to the lift station every day, they check them, so it's kind of routine to be doing that, so maybe you just happen to notice it.
Be at the same time.
I'm not aware, I talked to Glenn about four times today, and he didn't say anything about any issues there, so. As far as I know, everything's working just fine.
All right, sounds good, thank you. EDA report?
Also on the industrial park project, I didn't even mention this to Keith, but I did talk to Ryan at Center Point, wanting to know where the status of the natural gas is, because the new building in there is looking for gas. And he said it's still in the design phase, it's still going to go in, they need to get their permits from the city and the state to work in the right of way. And so I don't know how long the state takes to get it down 28, but I know that we can turn it around really rapidly for the city side. So their plan is to still get that natural gas in there this fall yet, so.
Okay. EDA?
Okay, so the EDA met in regular session today, which is Wednesday, October 4th. We had a couple items on our agenda, both of them related to the SCDP grant and loan, Small Cities Development Program Grant and Loan Project. Those are the funds that we have received back from various people that we've loaned it out to in the past, and now we relend it out or grant it out. We have two recommendations for the council tonight, which you'll have as action items. One is for Twilight Ventures, which is for HVAC improvements over at the old Arnie's Garage building over here. And the other one is for some electrical and plumbing code upgrades over at a home on Oak Street, at 211 Oak Street South. So those both will come to you as action items. And then also, we did talk about another potential sale in the South Industrial Park. It does have some wetland mitigation issues to try to make the lot a little larger, so I'm not certain that we'll be able to put this one together, but we do have another interest in two more lots, so that would leave us with just one left if these two were able to make that happen, so. Still activity out there.
Okay. Questions, concerns? Okay, then we will go to Planning and Zoning Report, Sarah? I asked Sarah to do this report basically because I think the council needed update on some of the properties we've got issues with, and that's why.
I think the main one that you're concerned about is that we passed a resolution not quite 30 days ago. The 30 days will be up on October 8th. But I was, I passed these two properties on Ash Street and took some pictures and got some documentation. They have gotten rid of the demo derby cars, they have cleaned it up significantly compared to other pictures I've taken. They still have some things they need to work on, but they've made some really good improvements. So we're hoping it keeps going in the right direction and stays that way.
Okay. One other one was Eagle's Nest.
We're still working with the city attorney on that one.
Okay. Because that one's, I'd like to get that one cleaned up before next spring.
Okay.
Otherwise, we'll be in the three years of going back and forth with them.
I'll reach out to him again.
Okay.
All right, anything else?
Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Sarah, thank you.
Move on to action items. 7A, approved resolution 2023-66, approving final assessment for author's edition.
So this action is subsequent to the public hearing to consider the adoption of the special assessments. The final assessment roll will actually be 509,13399. That makes that one small change for 303 Hickman Drive. That was something that when we were doing the negotiations for the easements, that we had looked at that assessment for him. Also, what Keith talked about was the assessments on the city-owned lots, and as you recall, a couple meetings ago, we did the marketing plan for the author's editions lots and set on a figure of 23,500 per lot for assessments. So this total is up to the 509,133, which is 35% of the project costs attributable to this portion of the project. As Keith said, there's some additional project costs that belong in future phases. We're only looking at the part attributed to this phase. So that is what will be certified to the special assessments. Of course, there is that portion that will be deferred. What the deferred assessments are, are the sewer and water mains and the hookups for the existing lots that aren't going to utilize those at this time, but at which time they would sell or hook up, then those would become payable. So that's where that deferral comes in. So a significant portion of these are deferred, because of course, the city ones are deferred till sale, and then a significant portion of the existing ones. So there won't be a lot of revenue coming back to the city right of way on this, simply because of the deferral, but it's all set up to come back to the city over time as hookups happen or sales occur. So also, the assessments, anybody can, and it says 10 years, but it's supposed, five years, it's supposed to be 10 years at 4.5%, and they can pay the assessment prior to November 15th to the city with no penalty for interest, because some people were asking about that interest. So what we're looking to do is approve resolution 2023-66, approving the final assessments for the 2023 author's project. It would be 4.5%, 10 years, 509,13399.
Questions? Comments?
I'm just curious, the parties that were here aren't here to hear it, but did the letters that go out say 10 years, or did it say five years for property taxes?
The letters went out and said 10.
10, okay.
Any other questions?
And the letters also broke it out, what is going to be immediately assessed for collection and the part that's sitting there deferred until hook up at some five, 10, 20 years in the future.
Okay.
Okay. Any other question? Do I have a motion to approve resolution 2023-66?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion by Sheldon?
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Aye.
Four in favor, none against, one abstention. Seven B, approve resolution twenty-twenty-three dash sixty-seven, approving final assessment for the 2023 reclamation.
This is, as I said, the Lakeview Drive project that we talked about earlier. The final assessment roll is forty-nine nine eighty-two twenty-three. This is a five-year assessment at four and a half percent, and that was what was sent out to everybody in their letters. Anyone, again, can pay the entire assessment prior to November fifteenth with no penalty. Otherwise, it will go on the assessment rolls to begin collection in 2024. So we're looking for resolution twenty-twenty-three dash sixty-seven, approving the final assessments for the 2023 improvement project.
Comments? Questions? You said four and a half percent?
These are all four and a half percent, yeah.
Okay, because on here.
There was type of.
Another type of, okay. Council have any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve resolution twenty-twenty-three dash sixty-seven?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Joe. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Seven C, approve resolution twenty-twenty-three dash sixty-eight, approving final assessment unpaid utilities.
This is the, this is the resolution that actually adopts those assessments. These were for the lot mowing and the utilities, the ones that we talked about in the public hearing. Again, this certification will be sent to Stearns County on November fifteenth. They have the option to pay by November fifteenth to avoid any interest. And the total certification is two thousand eight thirteen fifty-six. And this is just a one year. This goes on 2024, and then it's done. And that's resolution twenty-twenty-three dash sixty-eight, approving the certification of delinquent accounts.
Comments? Questions? Do I have a motion to approve resolution twenty-twenty-three dash sixty-eight?
I'll make the.
Motion by Diane.
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Seven D, airport commission appointment.
The airport commission has a vacant position, and so we do have a candidate who wishes to serve on it. It would be for a three-month and three-year term. So that's the balance of a term. It shall, our airport board has five members. One, one commission is a member of the city council, and three residents of Sock Center, and one is actually a staff person of the Public Works Department. So that's kind of interesting for this board. The vacant position expires on December thirty-first, 2023, and we have Jim Moore, who has submitted a request to serve on this board. He's actually a tenant in, of the Tea Hangers. And so he spends a lot of time out there. I think he does some, some training and that type of thing. I think he'll be a really good asset for the airport. So we're looking to approve the appointment of Jim Moore to the airport commission effective October fifth, 2023, and expiring December thirty-first, 2026.
So he's going to finish out this term and then?
He'll finish out, this, this is.
And then be on the, for the next three?
Right. It'll go through.
Okay. Council have any other questions? Otherwise, do I have a motion to approve the appointment?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Sheldon. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Joel. Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Seven E, accept resignation, police department.
The police department received a letter of resignation from part-time officer Brian Thorsted with an effective date of October fourteenth. He's been with the department on a part-time basis since January fifth, 2022, but he also worked for the city part-time from 2018 through 2020. So he's been a person that can, we can call to do some backup and some fill-in of some shifts. But now he's moving out of state. So we're going to accept his resignation of Brian Thorsted, effective October fourteenth, 2023.
Do I have a motion to accept the resignation?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Diane. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joel. Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Seven F, approve seasonal appointment.
With work to begin on the arena by the Public Works, Ben, Ben Klink has recommended that we appoint Clint Althaus as a seasonal employee. He worked for the city last winter season, and he brings experience from other arenas in the area, most at Saint Cloud. And so Ben is recommending that he be appointed at step six of the paid scale, beginning October fourteenth. Actually, they're going to start putting ice in up at the arena already. So, so we're looking to approve the appointment of Clint Althaus at step six for winter seasonal employment.
Questions? Comments? Do I have a motion to approve the appointment?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Joe. Second by Diane. Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Seven G, approve resolution twenty-twenty-three dash sixty-nine, authorizing advertisement for sale forfeited vehicle.
The police department has received through forfeiture a vehicle that is now available to be sold, a vehicle to be advertised through the state of Minnesota online auction, with the results brought before a subsequent meeting. The vehicle to be auctioned is a two thousand and three Chrysler PT Cruiser. And so the action requested is approve resolution twenty-twenty-three dash sixty-nine, authorizing the advertisement for sale of the forfeited vehicle.
Questions?
It's a really nice car, low mileage.
Do we, do we have a motion to approve resolution twenty-twenty-three dash sixty-nine?
Devotion.
Motion by Diane. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Seven H, approve SCDP loan Rugger.
So the EDA, at its meeting on September sixth, they reviewed an application from Dominic Rugger for an SCDP loan and grant program for rental rehab of a rental at two eleven Oak Street South. The building has three rental units, and a large amount of renovation is proposed for a total request of forty-three thousand five hundred. The EDA narrowed the scope of the application to include code deficiency updates, including water heater, electrical, and bathroom plumbing. And they also applied their average rental assistance per unit. So then they came in again today and met with the EDA, and the EDA has come forth with the recommendation that you see in your packet. The scope was reduced to sixteen thousand five hundred of what we could participate in for a city participation of eleven thousand five fifty, which is an average of three thousand eight fifty per rental unit. Under this scenario, the owner would pay four thousand nine fifty. The city would have a loan that converts to a grant over a period of six to ten years of six thousand six hundred, and then also a zero-interest deferred loan of four thousand nine fifty that would come back to the city in the eventual sale of the property. So the final amount, of course, will be presented for payment and execution of a loan agreement at a later date. So at a later date, it'll authorize us to enter into the agreement once we have that actual final dollar amount. But we're looking for the preliminary approval of the deferred loan and grant agreement to Dominic Rugger for a city share of eleven thousand five fifty.
Questions?
One question, I guess. So zero-interest deferred loan, how long is that deferment?
Until they sell it.
Until they sell it, okay. So they're not paying back necessarily on either the first loan that converts it into a grant or the second one?
The, the one that converts to a grant, so years one through five, if they were to sell it, then that would come back. But in year six, it goes to eighty percent, and year seven.
Got it.
It goes down to not having to owe anything back. If they keep it ten years, then that is a total grant and never needs to be repaid.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Otherwise, do I have a motion to approve the deferred loan and grant agreement?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion by Sheldon, second by Diane. Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Seven I, approve SCDP loan Bjork.
So Aaron and Matthew Bjork doing business as Twilight Ventures. They also applied to the EDA for the same Small City Development Program Rehab Loan Program. These available funds, of course, as before, are from prior loans that have been paid back to the city. But this one is different, and that is a commercial rehab versus the rental rehab. So two different proposals. This proposal is to rehab, rehabilitate a vacant building at five two five St. Clair Lewis Avenue. This is the building commonly known as Arnie's. The proposal will completely renovate the building into a med spa. The proposal submitted to the EDA, and now the city is for assistance for the total removal and replacement of the HVAC system. The contract estimate for the HVAC is forty-four thousand. If the project is finally approved, the breakdown would be the owner's thirty percent of thirteen thousand two hundred, the city convertible loan, which is the grant that becomes, or the loan that becomes a grant, is seventeen thousand six hundred, and then the deferred loan at zero percent, thirty percent, which is thirteen thousand two hundred. So the total project is forty-four thousand dollars, with them paying thirteen-two, and we paying the balance. But again, the final numbers will be provided at the time of payment, when a contract will be signed and recorded on the property. And then, of course, I state again, after ten years, the convertible loan will be a grant. The deferred loan remains a lien until some future date. The other part of this is that, obviously, there have other financing on this property, and our loans become secondary to the primary rent lender. So if they have a local bank or another bank is the primary lender, we always are subsidiary to that. And then secondary, if they end up, which they may do, apply for a gap loan from the revolving loan fund, then that would be in the middle of the two, I guess is what you would say. So the EDA kind of takes the, the bigger risk in order to get these businesses to happen. So we're looking to preliminary approve this project to the, for the total removal and replacement of the HVAC system for a total of forty-four thousand.
Okay. Questions? Concerns? Hearing nothing, do I have a motion to approve the project as presented?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heidi, second by Joel.
Sure. Sounds good.
Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Seven J, approve agreement for internet extension into campground.
So as, as you know, the park board's been working to bring better broadband capabilities to the campground. And then when Charter came up and said they would be installing fiber along Hickman Road, the park board researched ways to switch to that fiber. The Charter would bring the fiber to the campground, but they weren't going to be able to distribute it through the campground. So then we went to RVIG, and they, we got a quote from them for installation of infrastructure that would be needed to transmit internet throughout the area. This would include the installation of the main station in the park garage and eight repeater antennas throughout the campground. The cost of this part of the installation is twenty-four, four fifty-seven oh one. We would then own that equipment. The city staff, of course, we would be working to bury the fiber to each of those stations. Due to delays from Charter Spectrum and burying their lines past the campground, we reached out to RVIG once again about the possibility of bringing fiber from its current location by Wayne Transport. We did get a quote from them in 2022 for bringing that fiber to the campground, and the quote they gave us at that time was twenty-five thousand dollars, and so we dismissed it. Now we got a new quote for the cost of the fiber if we would bury it. So the cost is four thousand nine eighteen, so a little more palatable. So this would be for a total cost of twenty-nine three seventy-five oh one. We would have the fiber internet available in the campground and would be able to cancel the subscription with Gardenville. With the subscription, the users, with that subscriptions, users had to pay either a nightly, or a weekend, or a weekly or monthly rate to get onto it. With the new service, internet would be included in the camping rate. And you know, the seasonal rate was adjusted up this year by two hundred dollars for the eventual internet capability. These costs that we are proposing would be a hundred percent paid for with the camping revenues from this, this year, so the 2023 year. So we were looking to approve, to approve with RVIG for the campground, for the internet. Then, after I gave you your packet, we got an answer from Charter Spectrum that said they are going to provide me a formal quote, but this is the email. It says they'll provide a fiber drop to the property. They'll provide all the equipment, the wire, the access points, everything needed for the internet throughout the campground, all eighty sites with zero cost upfront. The kicker is, it's thirty dollars a site per month, year round, no shutting it off for six months, that the six months it's no one there. So we would be paying twenty-four hundred dollars for the internet. Excuse me. Thirty dollars times eighty sites, twenty-four hundred a month. So it's twenty-eight thousand eight hundred a year. And then they would give us a seven, they wanted a seven year commitment. But they would give us a hundred dollars credit if we signed up for that seven years. So they wouldn't let us sign up for anything less than seven years. So that's kind of where we're at. So it's kind of a, at least we know now what their cost would have been, and we realize that RVIG is a much, much better deal. Plus, we don't know yet when Charter's going to bury it. So, but at least we got another quote, so, which was getting very difficult to obtain. So based on that information and, and all the research we've done in the past to try to get better internet, I think the RVIG internet is, is our best bet to go with that. And so what we're requesting to approve, to approve to proceed with RVIG internet for the campground, the total cost of twenty-nine three seventy-five oh one. There will be some staff labor involved in that. And I know that sounds like a lot of money, and it is. However, we did not do any capital projects in the campground this year, so we have those available revenues to cover that. You have any more questions on that?
Do we plan on doing that this fall yet?
They'll start burying it soon as they get the ice in the arena. So.
Okay. Any questions? Concerns? Do I have a motion to approve to proceed with the internet through RVIG?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Diane. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Any last minute questions? Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries five in favor, none against. We have no unfinished business. We have no new business. We will then go on to our consent agenda. We have schedule of claims, unpaid claims of ninety-three thousand one hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents, paid claim of twenty-five dollars, for a total of ninety-three thousand two hundred and four dollars and fifty-eight cents. We have resolution number twenty-twenty-three dash seventy, accepting contributions of a hundred and forty dollars and fifty cents from the Men's Card Playing Group to be allocated to the senior center, and from Diane Kelly Night Vision Binoculars, value of two hundred dollars, to be allocated to the police department. And on behalf of the council and the city, I want to thank them two groups and people for their contribution. Is there any questions on the schedule of claims or consent agenda? If not.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Diane. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Joel. Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Informational items?
That did not arrive in time with me. So I'll just cross that off, the, the.
Okay.
Charter Spectrum lineup change.
All right. And with this, we will be recessing this council meeting and going into closed session. We will reconvene our city council meeting. This, we had our meeting over a possible land purchase by the airport, and we have directed staff to proceed with the negotiations and the purchase. Anything else from the council?
Nope.
Then I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Diane. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joel. Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Meeting adjourned.